I was going to request that there must be an increase in the number of social workers that are deployed in our schools. Because at times, teachers are really having a gap here and there in that service. We will find that a 10-year child gets pregnant.
Dear amendment.
Let me address myself to the amendment that are in front of us. I support the amendment, but my concern relates to the issue of a mother and a father. At times, we'll find that a mother gets pregnant. A mother doesn't know the clan name of the father of the child. When a child now is sick, there are times where we need to call the clan name of the father for the child to be healed. So, we are requesting that at least the clan name of the father must also be known by the mother. Regarding the rape cases. We are having a challenge when it comes to the test centers for rape cases. We are appealing for the intervention of the Department of Social Development. Thank you very much. I fully support the bill. My appeal is that when we're having a boyfriend, you must also know the clan name, even if the boyfriend is coming from Nigeria. Greetings to the shepherds. Greetings to the members of the panel. In the name of my Lord Jesus Christ, amen. My name is Jomefutimbebe. I come from Muzawatwenty. Under the program Isibindimboki. I would like to address the section 21 amendment. Where it is written that a father has got a right also to take a child and raise that particular child. According to our cultures and traditions as Africans. A father is not allowed to take a child without being married to the mother of the child. Even if the father is providing support during pregnancy, even when the child is born, even the father is providing support financially, but in our custom, a father is not allowed to take the child. Unless there is an agreement between families. That is, there's agreement between families from both sides and also the child must give consent. Then something must be done in that regard. This was really a short notice. If our traditional leaders were also taken on board earlier. We should be able to understand it better. As the Muzza community, we do not support the amendment of the bill. Let me come now to the issue of adoption. We've got a lot of challenges. A father goes out to countries outside that are foreign. And brings children that do not have birth certificates. The father will say he doesn't know the mother of the children because he left them. The question that comes to us is that how did the father cross the borders with the children? Then this means the father has stolen the children from that country.
Sorry for interruption. I just want to check something from our mother there. She said as Muzas, we don't support. But I wanted to check with her if there's something that she's raising that she feels that it needs to be amended to the bill. Because the issue here is for them or is for her to say something that needs to be put in place in order for her to support the bill. So if she's saying, "I'm not supporting," but she's bringing in, does she feel that what she's putting in should be added or should be put in place? Thereafter, she will come back and say, "Now, I'm supporting because I'm adding also this."
My input goes as follows. If we were given enough opportunity to look at the bill so that we can understand it better. And secondly, my concern that I'm raising is the issue that raises to the fathers that are taking children away. So if the involvement of our leaders was also taken in consideration, then I would consider supporting the bill. So those are the few issues that I wanted to raise regarding the bill. Let me come now to the issue of foster parenting. The challenge that we normally face is that our sisters go maybe and work in Durban. They come back with children, sometimes is sick. She doesn't know the clan name or the surname of the father. The grandmother now is having a challenge of accessing those services that the child needs because the mother doesn't know the surname or the clan name of the father of the child. Then if this mother dies without telling us who the name or the surname of the father is, when she, when we go and apply for foster care, we are told to go around and look for the father of the child and yet we don't know who the father is. I thank you.
Pardon, excuse me, just listen. What we will request to you. At last, we will have a family. So this is the challenge. All the children.
As we are conducting the pub hearings throughout various provinces, we are presenting the contents of the bill for the people to comment and ask questions. My request to you is that go to your community and also to the leaders that are there. Discuss with them the bill so that they can understand it better. You are fortunate enough to come and represent your community. Otherwise, we have only invited a few people that must come and attend. I'm happy that you are here. You will take up the message back to your community. Another thing that I would like to say is that I come from the same area as you are coming from. I know that in every community or in every family, there are negotiations between the issue of the, of children. For example, you will get your son who would like to go to the secondary school. Now, you must go to the father of the child so that you can discuss the issue. Now, if you do not negotiate, your son will go away and go to the school without reporting to all the parents. It's very important that you negotiate as families for whatever thing that is affecting the child. That's why I'm saying I'm happy that you are open regarding the bill. But we are covering all the provinces, collecting various comments and inputs. Otherwise, go out to your community and educate them so that they can understand it better. Thank you.
You are the last one. Any other hand? So that we get to answers now.
You will be the last participant for.
I would say protocol observed. Protocol observed. My name is Zoliwe. My surname is Mbemvane. I'm here to represent Muzata ECD Forum at KST Municipality. Okay, our concern as ECD. As we know that ECDs are community-based project. And where we are in our communities, we are in disadvantaged areas. Now then, according to these registrations that are needed in ECDs. This is where some ECDs are facing challenges. The first registration is NPO. Then followed by partial care certificate. This is where we got problems because when we are registering these partial care certificates. The center should be in hundred percent conducive. Our community members have an input in these centers. But coming to the activities within the organization. That is where they do not understand how the organization should be run. So we would like all the stakeholders to be involved in these registrations. For example, when health visitors at the center. At least they must have something to help with the organizations like providing gloves, providing first aids and also like fire, providing fire extinguishers. So that everything should be in place. Because sometimes when they get to these organizations, they won't find anything. Like when we have fire, what do we do? When we have kids being sick, what is, what do we do? So trainings also will be needed. Working together with all these stakeholders. We can comply with NPO Act. Also, we would like to appreciate to Social Development by funding these centers. Although they have their specifications. This is why I would like other stakeholders to be involved. Also, we appreciate to the Department of Education by training some practitioners. As now we are going to move to the Department of Education. We would like as ECDs to have the curriculum. Also, we would like to move with all our staff members to the Department of Education. Also, we would like our stipend to be paid direct to our accounts, banking accounts. Thank you very much. I did say I agree with the bill.
Okay, thank you very much. The last one.
Greetings to all the people in attendance. According to their portfolios or their roles. We'd like to appreciate the opportunity that I'm given. My name is Sizweki Kingili from Porton Jones. From we now, ECD is a drop-off center. I would like to have some contribution in relation to the relationship between the father and the child. I fully support the bill in front of us. Both love from the parent, from the mother and also from the father. A child needs the relationship to be strong between the child and also his or her father. I am taking, talking about the experience that I have. I grew up under very difficult circumstances where I didn't get the love from my father. That is really painful because I didn't have that opportunity to get the love and the relationship from, from my father. Although my father really loved us, but he was nowhere to be found when I grew up. I fully understand that there are practices in our societies where a father has to pay a particular fine before he can get access to the child. But that is disadvantageous as a student because we really need the love and the relationship that we must build with our father parents. I fully support the clause that talks to access to a child both from the mother's side and also from the father's side. I would like that that must be enforced because a child needs the love from both parents, no matter they are not staying together. But a child must be given that opportunity to get the love from the father and also the love from his or her, or from her mother. The second point that I would like to raise. I would like to address the issue that relates to the movement from Social Development to the Department of Education. I am excited about the move, but I also have a request. I'm excited because we are moving from Social Development to the Department of Education. Because there might be some benefits. I am happy for the move before there are benefits that we are going to get. For example, education will provide us with training. There is a change in curriculum system. So when now there is a new curriculum that has been introduced, we'll be, we'll have, we'll be having a chance of getting the training so that we are familiar with the curriculum and also the work and also the homework that is given to learners. Because as of now, we are disadvantaged because we have not been trained to the new curriculum. As we are aware that there are changes from OBE, for example, to CAPS and so on and so on. I have got a request as well moving from Social Development to Education. As care workers, we were paid quarterly, not monthly. Our concern is that we are also having children that we are raising. If now we are paid per quarter, they suffer in terms of the support that they need from us. So if we are paid monthly, then we will be able to provide support to the children that we have. We would like to request that we be paid on a monthly basis so that we can take care of the livelihoods of the children that we have, that we are raising. Regarding the issue of the municipality, at least they must intervene by providing support. Regarding the issue of the municipality, at least they must intervene by providing support to our centers.
Yamteela umaswala ma abenengkeba yokba asasabensana nati askase kaku lu. Nanjengo uba nisicho apa umaswala ma ba kwasu nto uba benze esba nisicho.
Municipalities must come on board. They must make sure that they provide the support as it is indicated in the clauses of the bill that is in front of us. They must honor what is written in the bill.
Diya ukasa ndiya ikasa lebil.
I fully support the bill.
Engos kota masuktaile galuku mamela, masuktaile galuku. Unga kukumiseki when you put issues forward. We understand nto uba uvanga pakati lena kijengboguchi. Watu unamaava alendo. Yoko uba ubekue taleni utando uluka tata. Koto kawi tetan kalu napesku lu infuna ku itete ulilumoya wa ngoku yazi ma iya kutukumis. Masuktaile ngolsho bo kotoa ke usia bulen. So that oh mama that are here, beve. Uba abantwaana baxukumis. Others are unable to express themselves as well as today unenye by uba uzozatiris. Maya thula baxale pesku alento bonumda na eh reckless eh chai drugs eh chai tic. Kandu ukiwa alento bata kwa kazu expressa ku mamaki kuti eh, I need my father now. Lebil ibonelele zonto zinchaluba. Kube kuinyoba yokuba at least a father figures. Zibena yo injela yo kwa zu ku support abantwaana bazu. Diambona ke ya numamulunga unfuni stuko salumtu. Azuka zuma nemtute sutu thula pelegas, thula thula kuboni. Situtuzela ncha halo uba uyamasba ngoakwa chola uskuma pume pantu kuti thula mbonwe, thula sonti. Chopapantu. Engos siya bulela ndu.
Well, thank you very much for your inputs, but what I would like to request is that please next time when you are raising new issues, you must try by all means not to be emotional. At least the issue of the access to the father is very important. I have noticed that one of the participants is also looking for the clear name of the father so that when the child is crying, at least you can comfort your child referring to the clear name. I understand those issues. So we find that at times our children are involved in drug abuse or other criminal activities because they are looking for the father figure or they are looking for their fathers. So the bill is also trying to address or to close that gap so that there will be stable families. In that, I thank you very much for your comments. Thank you.
Ah, you can talk. Masiguvu me uzaofumana i PMTS. Ukilistu yee PMTS upeso. Masini ke i officials ke itz department metuna zishomle. Winda unenda we ezitanga ibazanga le. Foro ndine ndine warii ezitelo. Ezitelo uyabo nakala namxanjengake ezipunye ezwezo ngi. But the departments are here to assist no mamelisitelo. Kotwa sanu na enwe office. You know, it was gonna be better today if umusit on such and such a date. I visited an office and I was attended by so and so. And lo umtu lo na akanga buyelekumu okanya zanganpe ndulu or zangati. Uye paglatafili so that we can be able to make a follow-up on those people. Ecti bathroom baba ya ngetisa kanibona baxeli ba futumezizulu e officein. Siya ifuna lontwinchan. Do kenamxanjenyani asikomo yomxangatik sizenepili asisa ngazokula. Koto asizuznanga. Ni ba kilu kufune kabe kiliwu. Uba abangetis. Eh, masbanike kebetuna ngoba noza ukala. Unfortunately, the province is not with us. It's only the district and sub offices that are with us. Masbanike ba thina betuna ngongo.
Are you officials?
Ba chonembone nina. Welcome. Sacho sababona ke ngongo maswakome. Okay, okay. Aybo, ugo mamana kaza lo eh ezmaskus ya fe. Ngoku nditi aniko apa is the province. Okay. Kube kega ke ma. Eh, I think I'm a mass no wakwa tlanjuka. Mo nuwe ni mamana kaza.
Eh, mani bulise. Eh, tafileni kubantu banke. Bulise nasen nalapes tulu yenge kamalika Yesu Kristo engosiya tu.
Amen.
Amen.
Cretions to the table and everybody in the wonderful name.
Mamana kaza umtwaanga kumbaninga ma Kristo nonke. Okoni bulisa ngenge kamalika Yesu Kristo, amen.
Some people might think we are all Christians because we are all Christians in the wonderful name.
Koto ake tanti ambaa apa manfuma nuwazuwe kawa. Jengbokalu ndenzel.
Eh, engos, Chairperson. Eh, lo tetayo ku mamana kaza u district director olapaka social development OR Tam.
And Mrs. Manakaza, district director OR Tam.
Upitolk, ipitoli kebetuna kutwa ibona aybo. Ayabona wena uyazalewa umfos. Bafunu kbonume petivi nikaluku. Utolige lasonge apa plus the TV. Imanjenga lo. Engos.
Ma, mani bulela kua konama muvana.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Eh, jengba besenchilo kende ngu Mrs. Manakaza nunkanyi saika manu district director olapaka social development OR Tam.
As already indicated that Mrs. Manakaza, the director of the OR Tam.
Eh, kukonto inga kontiza ipendula. Kotwa gen difunuku ti kala ndibulela eltuba alendo bana sini kwelo opportunity ngakhulme nde wetu. Indobana sitibane kwelo olo sizo kwa zin do bana abantu. Malapa OR Tambo bazo kwa zu uko raisa. The concern zabo towards the bill. Siya bulela kenge e bill. Enting do bana izusnotisa kaku lu si department.
There's not much for me.
Neshindesibansa nabantwaana.
There's not much for me to say except that saying I thank the opportunity that has been offered to us by our government that we should meet all together here, together with our community to listen to them when they are raising the concerns they are faced with, with the hope that this bill is going to assist us when we do our work in alleviating the challenges that we're coming across.
Difuna ke ukucho nendo kubana sizi tatile izi kalazo izi shokomenlo zabo izindo abakhalela ugneti swakuzu. Na lenda bayakwa ecti yoba esiyakwa education diwe iteta kua kulu. Difunuku ba tonisegisa abantu balap e OR Tam. Indobana sili sebe pansu ko mama ulusiti. No tata ukati waka Department of Education. Lumba wendo kubana i ecds asimovas siya kwa education. Ukala sele kua kulu. Difuna noku ba tonisegisa nendo kubana jengba bebetela indobana kaba esiyakwa education. Kube konna amakosa asuka apa ku social development.
I heard that they referred to the issue of the ecds being migrated to education. We as the department, under the leadership of Mrs. Lucetti, we have taken note of that with the hope that it is going to work well or to make things smooth for them to operate as they raised a lot of concerns and challenges that they are coming across. We have noted those challenges that they have incurred in this house.
Difunuku tonisegisa nendo bana jengba bebetela. Akona amakosa azao puma apa ku social development. Aye ayo sabensana abo ku Department of Education.
I want to assure them that as they had some, a lot of requests that they raised in here, we do have officials who are going to visit them to listen, to look on the issues that they have raised.
Eh, kukona ke no no kuteta tetana no kusabensana eskuenzayo. Zaguenza umzegelo indobana ngoluwesine lo angomsoomni. Kuso wakona iseshi apa o MEC waka social development. No MEC waka education. Abazao tibana namakosa ne stakeholders. Ingakambi ezitilishana lo ecti ukuenza balumba. Uteta ngoba kukona le shift iya kwa education. Abantu bakatuseleke. Kotwa gen difunuku cho indobana konna konna. Kloniaka sisa kubana ababa bantwaza yaka education. I program isa ukala kunyaka ozay.
There are negotiations that taking place right now and there's some kind of cooperation between the MEC for Social Development and the MEC for Education. For example, on Thursday, there'll be a meeting where things are going to be. I want out to try and make this migration as smooth as possible. But presently, we are working together with those ecds.
Ne minya imiba ke eteto apa ngbebele malunga nabantu abango tata nendela esi. Abantabati banana zo it challenges ntingo bana. Si itatile yonge le yomengeni. Kabe figure abandes officeini, we are committing indobana sizo bangeta ngobaana. Basigues ndausiguzu, simele ised.
And the issue that they touched, like the issue of the parents, the father parents or figures who have access or the kind of access they need to have to their children. Promising and we are committing that when they come to our offices, we will have to try and help and assist them in the challenges that they are raising.
Si klinga ke nendo kubana ke le process isa sesebenza. Ge Children's Act. Kuba konna izi ndo esesakhalele indobana zibe ziyama ngolsho. So as consultations asin zawayo ntingo bage. Nati sisa usnotisa kaku lu M7 inwetu esofficein zetu, engos.
I think this bill is also going to assist us in doing our duties because as we are using the Children's Act, there are some gaps that we see as the officials, but we can't do nothing about them. But we hope that this bill is going to assist us in making our job easier and try to close the gap that we are seeing in the Children's Act. Thank you.
Diaktembi sagama muvana no muazon konzo zofuma.
After what?
Not only owing konzo, ne minye bafuna le tatisi. Bonga ba mama balapa, all of them.
That you are going to help.
All right, thank you very much, Mama Nakaza. But you were too general kaku lu kotoa ke let's maybe. Whether the officials that are here, as nando tetane? The other officials that are here, koba utetile ngono shewa. Okay, if they don't have anything to say, sa unige la i members of parliament to just have some bite comments on what was said and advise in some cases, engos.
We are giving over to the members of parliament now to have some bite and comments.
Mna gen diampi kawa nje ngbanimanisitenge kamalika Yesu Kristo engosiya tu, amen.
I need those hands.
Who, who, can I identify hands? Okay, klenji. Klenji and who else?
Outside.
Zoket. And, and, and red and. And then. Mama Sonto. Okay, that's all. Over to you. Now? Zaovala galuku. Mama Sonto.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much, Chairperson. I, well, still EFF. I don't know where red and is coming in, but yes, maybe we are. Um, Chair. I just would like to comment on the centres for disabled children and educated practitioners. I think there's a need for this disabled ecds. In each and every ward of the country, we need to have these ecds that accommodate our disabled children and the dietary needs of these children. Because remember, these children have specific diets that they must, that they must follow. Food, specific food they must eat.
Engos, si kaku lusalo. And difunuswa mla galenda uyama ziko ecti wabantwaana bakuba zekleyo. And yakuti kui watanga anya inga asesibena yo eecti yenzelebu wananda bakuba zekleyo. Konuku zekuazumela na infuno zabo. Kua kunyane no shobuluku ya bakucha yonge kasha baba nokucha ukokuabo. Zonge yelo ziko kui watanga anya aselibea konna. Ukuzel kwa ziku melala infuno zabongo kufanile kley. Kunyenge nababa fundisa konna. Na obabi bafume ne utatkaesho olu ambe lanani meko yabo.
Yes, and then there was a, 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 a mother that was raised this issue of the girls that fall pregnant of, you know, men. They don't know the surname and the clan. It is important and I want to encourage the parents that when your children fall pregnant, please let them tell them, let them tell you who the father is because every single child need to know his or her identity.
Ubeko lomba ke wabantwaana abati bensima umdu umdana angaziwane tata angazwane sutuko zabo sake. Abazali bayakutazo kuti za umdana wako umnambazi seka ete wenzuwanzima. Umazi ui se omdana okanya aziwewe wisi omdana nesutuko sake. Kuba umdana ekobilin kufuneke zazilin ngambuzake. Ezazilin tsuka piake okanya kokoba ke. Ka inga zwa kwa stukusakata tuza uzazinjake.
Yeah, and then there was another issue raised in terms of the municipality that said they don't have budgets to assist the ecd people. I want to encourage you, before the budget process, there's an IDP process. At the IDP process, that is where you can go and raise your issues and put your issues on the budget. Because sometimes our people neglect to go to the IDPs and that is where the municipality fell because then the municipality don't know what the need of the wards are. So please, when you hear about an IDP meeting, make sure that you attend that meeting in order to say to them, listen, this is the need. We need facilities for ecd and such things that you can put on the budget.
Si pende sise glomba umaswala abanganai budget i ecds. Ayikali kuinda wa yebudget ina kinga kikala ngela kasha le, le IDPs. Apokbisokona esin tlanganiso. Kufuneke nibenini baxala bayayokea okanya abadibameli ward. Abayayokea bakatase kwa ngela kasha kuskuwes IDP meetings. Bakatase kuti tinakoe tu e ward sittinga lena naleena kui eecti ekla ward yetu. Ikala paya ina kuba ngaba ke abakojiswanga ngalo ndo. Kua uzo pelage ngoku ina faganga ngoku infuno ze eecti kui budget. Kandifuneke kala ngela kasha kubisweza meetings e IDP.
Yes, then in terms of the forced marriages, I think the elders have the responsibility to, I don't know what they call it, the clans or what do you call it? The tribes. Yes, the elders in the tribes must really look into this thing of forced marriages. I mean, it cannot be that a child of 12 years old must now get married to a man of 65. How on earth did he get it right to just get onto that child?
Eh, kui kala ke lawa ndana bakatati so beba ngutige. Ibalikile kuteke engos isomtwayama okanya banda bekasi. Ba abenga abo fulinsela kimeko yokuzama ukutindela londo. Inginge zigke ngoku ezizwe, inge zizwe. Ezaluka tluka ne kuinda wesiguzu. Ma imeleke nyawi ndoba inga fumelikdo baba ndana bakatati so beba nguanyabindi swe.
Yes, but we as lawmakers also have that responsibility that we must really look into this legislation that if a child of 12 years old can give consent for abortion, how on earth we must really look into that matter. Thank you.
Kua konana nati kesinga bezumteto kukunez. Ndefunese kwa lasile klemi teto. Mzegelongo la mzegelobusin zwa apa umtano na 12 years. Okuazoku tiki janige zalimfume yoba makakomfi swe. Venga kange baziswe abazali. Noko, noko, noko. Falidu basikwa lasile londo nati singa abanziwa nubakulu ngbe mtieto.
Thank, thank you very much, Chairperson. Mine is two issues. Firstly, I would like to...
safer environments for our children to grow in.
Kubalile kile kute tinabenzibomtheeto kuinyenabasebenzi bakachulmende kuinyenulundu sisebenzisana ukensegisuku ti indau esichala kuso kanyanabaitwa kulila kuso sisenza sibese zikuseleke kanga ngoku.
Because the wounds that you have as a child, you carry it with you when we become adults. And we struggle with many things when we are little and we have experienced wounds. And it is therefore this bill, it is so important.
Isfubeku umdakula nazo jengomdaana abe mdala utinakaso umdala kwa upela ubumbako sibana entelela etile yoku sbonakale sa unga shkono kutuwa wena kala wenza esinye isfubeko ngenga yesfubeku stwale upela nazo.
Therefore, my sister that spoke of the chiefs and the need for rural communities to know about the bill and understand what the bill addresses is a critical matter.
Kwakona nosisi yote tango bage ulundula paha esalali kuinyenengo siso mtoenyama kubalulege kakulu kutimabaya waslo mteeto sishomelo unga nduni na ibalekile kakulu elakalelo elichoyo nyani ke ibalekile kakulu ndoba ma waslo mteeto.
So there is work here, Chief Directorate or Director of Social Development, together with the Public Participation Team of Parliament, that when we hear that communities are saying that it is too short notice for us to engage properly with the bill, or we don't understand fully the implication of the bill. I want to ask now that we please engage especially those rural communities and those chiefs and chieftains in those communities so that they understand the legislation and the implication of the legislation.
Nangoke umsabenzu akoke wena mpati o Director kuwakala kukusebenzisana kuinyenefisiye parliamente ekukuzelela ukutata ngai kwa bagulundu iofisiye public participation ukuti abandubane skalo soba abanikwana klasalanele lubabakuazu funda baweki se lo mteeto sishomelo umsabenzu ukensegisuku ti niyakua baba seshalali baufuma ne umteeto sishomelo sisa nao kwa ngetu ba bakatsele ba itifika imene jengalena babebesisebe waslo mteeto sishomelo beseku.
Lastly, I spoke about the pain that we have as children and how we carry it into adulthood. Forced marriages and marriage, child marriages, it interrupts the development and the growth of a girl-child.
Okutubela kulenda yutwalo kabantuano kuindi soko abo okanyabanyanzeliswe ba chatuseku nyanzela kuinyincho kukakulu kuba kupaza misana namanganaba ukukula komdana kumsutu bunduana bake umdana kuyomenza ubama kasbonengukusela unguzazi selangumama selangunozala kanti kanga aldule abonwabele bunduana bake.
And that's why what Marketa has spoken of to say the mother doesn't have an ID, the child doesn't have a birth certificate. It is not a government problem, how can it happen? It happens because the girl-child has not received critical development, education in order to become a mother that is empowered and able to look after her own children. It is one of the things that prevents us from becoming the mothers that our children need. So I am pleading with our communities that we must not allow for girl-children to be forced into marriage and for their education and their emotional development to be interrupted by getting into relationships like marriage that emotionally it can stop their development. I am pleading with you today. Thank you.
Kunjengowa beseshe lumba muke apa esenzumsekelo ngomama ozelo umdana waslo umdana wa kenaye wasala umama zanga benasertifike sozala na lo umdana wakamzeleyo na lo uzelo umdana wa kesabeko sertifike sozala yonge lo du susela kundeyo ba wala mama unga zanga benasertifike sozala wa nganyolu abunduanabake wa tatoa wa yokwenzo ufulazi engakange aldulo kumananganaba obundu mbazana akule jongomdana akayshwe apuche ngondo yaké jongomdana ayazi ndoba ka umdala e ngumdalala kumele sekile umdana kaimzele ayupaliswa ulfinchiwe ilutuba la mama esengumduana wa bakasela unguzazi wendota e ngumzali engakaya zikwa ndongo ke pinsertifike isduesinjaloke zipso kukakulu sizo ukusabaga lukuti nabanduana bake apidumdanake angabina sertifekiti na ulomdana kasali umdana kozupina angabina sertifekiti kanti ngambi susela api kuindawa watwalo ayokwindi swa esemenge engakabingomdu mdala engayazindo ke sertifike sozala.
Thank you Chairperson and thank you to everybody who made their comments. Chairperson, I first would like to say thank you to DSD for recognizing that there is a lack of communication when it comes to the migration of ECD from DBE to DSD. From what we heard here, there's a lot of misinformation, but also a lot of expectation for this migration. And I would hate to see that next year when it happens that the ECD practitioners are all left disappointed because their expectations are not met.
Engusikala ke ku Director ngukuti mwa kwa ziloba ka ukuti ukona umsanza okoyo kulendelela yokusuka ku ECD, ECD yodijanswa no education bazama ki basazama ke uvala lo umsanza kubake ya ubasungu kakulu ndoba kutisele ECD sulu seloka education basa bafike bakubekena ngakubi ngentela aba fagwe ngayo pa okanyango lo amkeela ba lukufuma na yo siyabula ndoba ke kutikandi niyazama ni na abesebeni ukupondweni ukuzama ukulula lo mankrina na lo mingeni ingati ingavela kuba ingabasungu lo ndoba ke kwenseke lendo kandukui imingeni siyega kanyabaya guyo bi puma kweninyenje indau.
Also, school attendance is compulsory in South Africa. It's compulsory from grades one to nine. And one of the reasons that ECDs is moving to DBE is because they want to make the first two years ECD compulsory too. The problem comes in is that it's your parent and your family responsibility to make sure the children are going to school. It is compulsory schooling.
Kwakona baki onabatetengi mfuundo mayanzo esinyanzelo ikona lo ndu emsanzafrika umdana unyanzelikile ayeskulente ubunikane ayofika ku grade nine ne ECD ez yu ilaminyakamebiini yowabanda na wabeku ECD ezakwenzo esinyanzelo yole ndo ilulselo kwa education itijanswa no education kwensele ndoba ilaminyakamebiini ye ECD ibesesinyanzelo na yo yokongesa kule aminyaka iyamba yupela ke ku grade nine sisinyanzelo mfuundo emsanzafrika.
Then Chairperson, we're talking about teenage pregnancies, teenage pregnancies, but nobody's calling it what it actually is. If the child is under sixteen years old, it is statutory rape. It is not just teenage pregnancy, it is statutory rape and that is a criminal offence. And by not reporting it, you become complicit in that crime. You have to report it because you are not protecting the child or the baby. You are only protecting the perpetrator of that crime. And in most cases, we know who these perpetrators are. They are amongst us, they're in our homes, they're in our communities. So it is not just about teenage pregnancy. If the child is under sixteen years old, it is statutory rape. And it's not going to stop overnight. But by starting to report it means that you prevent this adult from doing it to somebody else's daughter.
Kwakona kwakona lendo itetwe yu umitolo abanduana desibangi ingagi asilo umitokupe la ikalela kundoba umdana onemi nyageli shumele standardatu akana lungelu la kuti ewe anganga na kusindo zeso kwabela nagesondo noba angaxoti ewe ye na umdana la ewe wa ke akana kabiizwa katetindo umdana umdu olala umdana onemi nyagela pasukeshumele standardatu luludwi ngulo olo panzukomtheeto oksemi titwin luludwi ngulo olo engikamiti kwa umita umdana lo kwa ndoa magalalu enemi nyagela pasukeshumele standardatu luludwi ngulo olo lo ndo may reportwe ukulmende kazu yazi kanga kanga kuyabaza labayo reportezo zindo okanyaguya ba ndoba yu reporter lo ndo ile yu umita yonai landela mva yonai ngagi yoba kwa ndoa magabe ungena kusindo zokwabela nagesondo umdana onemi nyagela pasukeshumele standardatu emsanzafrika akavumele kanga umdana onemi nyagela pasukeshumele standardatu ubama gati ewe anganga na kusindo zondo nubu ewe wa kanga mkupa kota lo ewe akana kabiizwa oksemi titwin kuba akana lungelu lo ba nganga na kusindo zondo la nbe ngapasko mi nyageli shumele standardatu ujutige ingagi ilapake kutu ba masbayeke abanduana bana mi nyagela pasukeshumele standardatu bangena kusindo zeso zondo zokwabela nagesondo asikuseli umdana okanyelona ye na uludwi nguluayo sikusela lumenzu obubilona umudwi nguli lo na kukungasi kaza zezo zindo kasi kusela umudwi nguli singa yomtaza simazi kubaba ndaba mitisaba nduna abanbetu siyabazi kubaba singa yipambili sionmanga lela kubaba lo umdamitsle umnengi lo umdana lalana umnengi nati gesifaka kula pulo mteeto nati na wewe zenza umdu one kalelo okanyo oyikasa yendo yoba makutwengulu lo umdana imeni mi nyageli shumele standardatu.
And then lastly, Chairperson, we're talking about the mother without the ID and now the child does not have an ID. But we are assuming that this person has not gone to Home Affairs. We've driven past Home Affairs here and there's a queue. And I would like to see one Home Affairs in the whole of the country that doesn't have a queue. And we can't just assume that that person did not go and look for a birth certificate when we all know Home Affairs is either offline or they closed today and you just can't get your birth certificates or your smart IDs. And we are sitting here asking the community to meet government halfway, but government needs to meet the people halfway as well. It's a partnership between government, the people, and the private sector. So thank you very much, Chairperson, and thank you to everybody who's spoken here today.
Kupiyende kbeko lendo itetwe yu mama ongena sertifike sozala no umduana wa ke ongenaso waslo alomdana ongenasertifike sozala na eywazala umdana ongenasertifike sozala siyaké ukuti mchla mbi lu mdu ba mkbendzalo nduwa mchambi agakaya kwa Home Affairs uyofuna ugnaitwa kengalendo yoba kunge ku sertifike sozala kotoa ke apelizwe nichigelele nubu ngatulani na kwa Home Affairs ofika umngelele umtewa ba antu Home Affairs na kubaba sisaapa situlia kwakona sa obona umngelele onzalo siyacho sitabana mabazame ukusebenzisana ukulmende sitibane halfway kotoa ke nati sunkulmende kule tikala mskunsegisuku ti uHome Affairs usogene ngagiye computers kasebenzio okanyesi offline okanyo mchambi umdu utiselisfakiliske lo sake ingaze buimbendulu na lapo nati sunkulmende smele sekilwa sbesayala eyetindima nuzama ukukangelwa indolibangela uHome Affairs usolo ke offline ukuti kabanbi sifakiliske lo sabo zenga buimbendulu kotoa ke nani kule nikala nduwa mskunsekuti indokfuneke yeleka Home Affairs uyayele. Engusikala.
Awa ifmani PMDS na.
Thank you, Chairperson, and I want to thank you for all your valuable inputs here today.
Engusikala osbula la onge umdu tewas dina wala pangalemene namchlaje.
Before this, I was a councillor for more than a decade. So I want to clarify the role of municipalities in terms of the powers delegated to them.
Pa mko bage ndibe la paklenda ndukuyo benke ndangu treba imenyake ngapesulku shume. Pa mko koba ke ndingeneke glaelka lo nfunulenza difunutatrisa ngendima eh talo angomaspala yulu nduin.
Sometimes we struggle and we get confused and frustrated with the municipality for not assisting us and we call the councillors useless.
Kumanyama klasashaya sokola sikapuke sbeni misindo sitesimachibe lenko basi sitenge okanyo ngabinamsebenzi otreba betu.
But oftentimes, what we ask are not within their means to give.
Kotoa ke matloshama nizi okosigulinde lo kuti basensele kona kusube kunga pesu kama ntilawabo.
And most times, when we get to a gathering like this, all we want to know is ndi tatapi imali.
Yama klasushama nizi klasukundibano esingezi indiosolo kosi eva yoba bayabuso kuti sitatapi imali ngama nyama zungomaspala lo obuzalo umbuzo.
So I want to clarify that municipalities do not fund ECD centers.
Ndiya funa kuitatrisakela lo namchlaje ba omaspala aba kasinga imali ECDs, ainga abo abakasa ECDs.
So do not frustrate yourselves. The powers of the municipality are restricted to land use planning, rezoning, facilities of recreation, the creation of parks, the provision of water and electricity to these ECD sites, infrastructure, and enforcing their bylaws in terms of these with regards to health and safety and fire standards.
Umsabenzu kama spala ke iba kukubonelela umchaba ma kukiweku yole ECD indau zolonwabo ipaka zalonzalo ukubakukuama nzi ukusi kwa kuziza ngukucha lukutaze zindo kwa kuinyenugunsesu. Funeke zitlaulelu kuko yoke intima kama spal.
So let me tell you where's the money.
Matinekala lo kuti ipike imali.
ECDs that are registered can apply for funding from the Department of Social Development through the Department of Public Works, through their EPWP program, the Expanded Public Works Program, through COCTA, through the Community Works Program, as well as the National Development Agency.
ECDs is ngafaka iskalo sema luko Social Development, ku EPWP, ku Public Works, ku COCTA zonge ke ezonda wenzinda wenu fakuzo iske lo kuzo zezo kufuma na imali for ECDs.
So DSD provides funding through a subsidy per child to the registered centers and program funding in terms of nonprofit organizations.
Esebeke le Social Development lo na li nikesela inkaso ngokomdana ngamne kokunyenenguboke ye fundo umdana yesobe uyayufuma na hapo.
Through the EPWP, provides training to ECD practitioners.
Ku Public Works yu akoba ECD practitioners, ECD.
Then you get the Community Work Program through COCTA where sites can be run by NGOs. They don't fund centers directly, but they give money for ECD-related programs that can be included in the work done by communities.
Kubeku Community Development yona eyakwa COCTA etike inikesele inkaso ngendubo ye NGOs a inikeseli ngoku isikone lo iniyenza ngendubo ez yaku NGOs imali okaza ECD. Inikesela lo imali kuba iNGO layo inengubo ye ECD ikaleke ngoki COCTA ikase lo imali kuba isenengoba ke iNGO layo isaba yoke ngukulema lesu nteangayo ECD.
And then the big one that we don't often talk about is like the black sheep of the family, the National Development Agency. They provide funding to NGOs and civil society organizations. They assist and facilitate civil society organizations' access to identified funding and market opportunities and networking. So their main focus is on grant funding and resource mobilization. And now we all know where to get the money. Thank you.
Eyokebela ke eyona eyi fana nenda bayagwa mko zika fana itetwe ngayo ENT eyi yonake eti ikaseke iagentes panzukwayo kuinyenee NGOs esenza panzukwayo isenengubo zoku kaza uinkubo zuluundu icivil organizations. So eyoke anye indau enimali enize melba ikaza ECDs. Ngoku kesi ayazuku ti ECDs imali melba zifuma na pina.
Nam itinditache ituba eli ndibulele umpaga atu onga apa eholue.
Let me also take this opportunity to thank the community in this hall.
Kakulu kakulu ndibulele ngoba iimitetele zenga ayo ndive ba ibambile yonge ukutoala banako iparentali ba ibambile na yo ndowe balulekile yole besizele apakun.
I thank you particularly in the fact that you have heard correctly the bill, the purpose of the bill, why you are here, the parental, the issue of forced marriages, etc. You have captured it correctly. That's one of the reasons I have to thank you for being informed.
Lendo ndifunui tetaka kulu kakulu ile yeye tunjenka bazali yoku ti ka ikona lendo yoku reju akomduana si shaela ngapaget enlini singa funi abandu bayazuku tumtana oreji.
Chair, I want to stress and emphasize that rape or the statutory rape, most of the time, we as family, we don't want to go out. We want to suppress it as an issue of the family, which is very incorrect.
Tivuyeka kulu noku va aba ingosi zetu esibesi apa zee zipaula ngabanduana.
I'm also grateful that I listened to Trashali leaders who have been here, who also made their contribution and commented about the issues that has to do with children.
Difunoguti abazali abatanda abanduana abaye kiisni iya kwe pambiku eskol or next to a church.
I want to say, parents who are very fond of their children, they cannot allow a ship in to be built or run in front or next to a school or even close to a church.
Siti ebkosini or emzin abas nega abantu amasaid yu klala.
It is us, the Trashali leaders or the committee members who give people sites where to stay or to build.
Siyakolo nokuti sifuzesbe nama parks abanduana betu apa bazos lolonga kona.
We even forget about having parks for our children to where they can enjoy and practice and get exercises.
So asulumke leni lendo le kakuba nama IDP jengoba o umshlo nichwa ngapasea chilo si esionkenela lama IDP.
We should be serious about the issue of the IDPs like my fellow colleague here, Honorable Member, who emphasized the importance of attending the IDPs.
Tibulele futu gu Vugani Madoda.
I also want to thank Vugani Madoda.
And difuni ni vuge jengoba nipuna abanduana nipuge na nipuke nikuazu ngaida abanduana kutu batole infunde ebalulukele ebalulekile.
As Vugani Madoda, meaning wake up man, we don't want you just to wake up and produce children. We want you to wake up and make sure that children do get the necessary education and.
Abas puma emakaya siyatanda ota tabatande unkandu va lokutonga abanduana na wa kiasetastosa nguk.
We also, we're from the rural areas or coming from different areas, we would like to have our parents or the father take up and take care of the children.
Nye payaku akuma ama paya dimwile katetaka kule atetange utraditional hila or lida.
Hila.
Hila, traditionally hila. Diatanda ukuti kwenmini kunzuku ez nin ziti na jenga bazali sitwele apeholue kandi ya ndiya kuyenyo diolashama tambu ndifunugu sbona antinike amayeza after antinikile ndinga kwasupatala se tipatala ngomduana wa.
I also want to refer to the Trashali hilla who spoke here, a member from the Trashali hilla. We sometimes like to go to Trashali hillas to consult and get what we need from them. And when we fail, we cannot afford to pay. We end up now gambling and giving over our children to them.
Diatanda ukuti nani nikuazu bakusa ababazenzu o traditionally hillas ababa yenza ezindo ezin bigange nibakuse because basu susa istunzi senu.
I would like to plead with you that please those who are Trashali hillas who are doing things in a way that put a bad idea on your good calling, that you must please don't allow them. Please deal with them or put a bad on your calling.
Tibuyekuni o social weka. Tibuyekuni ontlalonklebe itukuti ai isa ani abantu inina nisonde la ni siyayazuku ti ni itransport yenu yansokolisa bonele area yenu is too vast but is it is onde la nikanani abantu sosoba kwasu sukaphaye emakaya babu yebu yepapa diyayazi ubuninti betu besolo kosebenzela emakaya kwa ngoku i school level wa nungoku isaani bagitizani nisondele abantu ineni yekubo diyayazi nazo isubdistrict nentoni do asondele imelo umdu ozo puma epalament.
To our social workers, I heard that in most cases, they struggle to get transport. But we want to plead with them that they should do what they need to do to go and visit our people. Yes, currently, we are on level one and we've been working from home. But now we are on level one. Please go out and go to your people. And we heard that you have some district offices. Please do your best and visit as much, as many people as you can. Despite the fact that we heard that you also like having transport.
I'll say. Ay ndicho le umdu se unditonsi tlbe u agasanga kwasu ipaula lendo afuna ndipaule utindi itonguni nditi zikona iconstituency offices, the members of parliament apa zikona unga ti umkosi Manda Mandela iconstituency akere ikona apa asingenene nugu yonati jenga ba batla singali ndeli yenu esemandui ngoba sosoba nuguazu kibela i.
I aeroplane or a palo?
Aeroplane.
Ipalo yini Cape Town kanti nishia epalamente ikona apeka.
My fellow colleague who has just pulled my ears here to add something, that you should also visit the constituency offices in this area. I think the constituency office that we have is the one of Chief Manda Mandela. Leave that office unattended. Go to that office, give it work to do. You cannot take a plane and fly to Cape Town to raise your issues whilst you have your own parliament here. Because the constituency office is your parliament here. That's where you're supposed to go and raise your issues.
O umshlo nichwa Dongeni Usenyandi.
Chief Dongeni from Nyandin.
And then untobongwa na Usemshlo iofisi labandu nba shoyo nga ba base ma ofisi niaga lawe parliament.
See, untobongwa na mshlo mshlo, those people that are mentioning are those who are involved in the office that represent parliament here.
Niti untobongwa na Usemshlo.
Untobongwa na isatimshlo mshlo.
So asuasibenzisene lama ofisi akwazu nin ngai tagwenzisindo ez nin tsingaga nenga gafigelelo ngoo ontlalo nenga gafigelelo ngoo councillors.
Let us utilize those offices without waiting for the social workers or councillors.
But ndinbulala kakulu because ni benesbe indisoketaka ezindo ez isin katazayo.
I'm much for being bold enough to raise the issues that concerns you.
Siyakala fika guno bronthalonkle abaninsu jenga ningoku.
The social workers, we also thank you as well and the government, the department officials. It's the first time that we see such a big attendance of the government officials.
Thank you very much, Honorable Members.
Engusakaku ma lunga tontote.
Mnasenkotke ile andazini na nixelile ndo ningatok.
I am already packed. I don't know why I'm still seated without packing. I am already packed. I don't know why I'm still seated without packing your stuff.
Initially bestembe ukutile meetingi. Keke itzale kotuake imeko ye yanyanzele.
We did not expect this meeting to be this long, but the circumstances forced us.
District directors is a ulisi message u MEC. Ukuba at least no ko. I subdistricts zako kani subregion or suboffices bezimelu. Unyanzi lumamuchain throughout the provinces, besesis visitil. Ubufuma na only two officials, one official. At least in other provinces, we were with the MECs. So siyapreciatea lendu. Kotuasifuna esin do i service delivery to people iye. Remember sipuma kui elections, besipuma singena apa emizin. Sitenga bandu kui kui lendu mobilisation eh campaign. Ukutaisa kwenza pete. So magesenza pete regenyani starting from today. Masu umamuchainu wita pazelu kuti. Eh as offices, the constituents betunani masi sabenzis. Masia ambisiyo bakila aba official bangafuniyo ba futumeziztulu. Na ba bekipachezulu inba ngabiko. So that eh i service delivery. Eh I think esinye isitelo like hezazitelo bezitelo apa. We can't answer them today and we have to try and make means. Obasi abantu baati. So tinasin go bandu abati. Siyokaza kundoba nasitelo and how do we go forward naso. Siyazu kuti as social development si se faced with the three fifty. Esinga kapataleki ne chuse esinde. Inintsinge into ne food parcels. Esdiscover sho kuta ziam kui communities yamba kwama banina kwama banis ketabantu. So all those things are things that are facing the social development eh eh department. Eh tinati as members of parliament is kapazaleke. So we really want to eh apologise for all what has entered. Usbeginda meplukwene to say that you make a follow-up out of this. I'm happy that it's different subdistricts that are represented here. So ba no tila esin do. But bandu, if there are still things that you think you want to share with them, they are still here. You can go to them one by one, give them chance, nensama appointment and all the stuff. So that at least esin do zif. Kukatukuti i parliament imifiki ile. And there is a change after sinyatele apa. Otherwise, the 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 attendance was good. We never anticipated and expected it. Thank you ever so much, our officials, mobilisation team, everyone that is here. Kotuane ndinikimbe ko engosi nicosundamas kausnai te usbulelele lo ngingenyaya abantu lap. We never knew that you are here, otherwise be melba sinisamke. Because we all know that i council, aikamika aklenge simo is right. Abantu basa lunglungisichla lo basa shukshuku. So nikaluma mu ndamase asbulela abulele naati namlo. Tifunuku bulele ramkaya. Muches bandingowala apa. So just thank all these members and the people abalisilapo. Thank you ever so much. I'm not going to say anything sahvala after you. Thanks, ma.
Ma ndibulele elituba.
I thank the opportunity.
Ndi lipiwa i parliament.
Granted to me by parliament.
Ndi ziva ndinga mnanane.
I feel very humbled.
Eh ngoku zithoba okulu. Ndi bulela itafile yonke ndinga italulanga.
With all respect, I want to thank the panel on the table without any discrimination or favour.
Ndi bulele amakosa onke.
I also want to thank all the officials.
Usocial development ngo silapangi kunyengayake.
Particularly the Department of Social Development because the reason why you are here is because of the Department of Social Development.
Wonke umdu olapa uyabuleleka.
Everybody is being thanked for being present here.
Nezinto zonke eskotoe apa zika.
And we also thank all the inputs that you have made in this gathering.
Si.
We hope for the change.
Si ne temba lokuba isin do ebesenge kenzeki. Ziza ukwenzeka, ne singa zetanga.
We focus today was on the.
Singa vyaka kulu ke parliament. Ukuba lendi maseni kalile nina. Ingakaluwa. Bonke, nomaspala bonke. Benzenjong baseleni kalile bazake emsekweme.
We are staying with the people in the rural areas. We live with them. So that is why it is very important for us to get some recognition and working, the working together should be very effective if you are all pulling in the same vein together with us in the rural areas. We thank you.
Genka basendili nikiwewe elituba. You'd never said so. In the name of Jesus, amen.
Genka endo basendili fumene elituba. Mandi icho indo eti. Amapaga atila wetu angotheba. Noko akasipati kakulle. Kotuasiyakeli parliament. Kulena i group ka twenty twenty-one. Noko zake kwenze kwa kushle. Kusake nzsiswan. Eh yo na ndosifuna yo sisingosi. Inzabenziswan ne communication kakul engos.
Let me also grab the opportunity by saying that our subjects, who are the councillors, they are not working together with us as the Trashal leaders. But let us hope that in this new era of twenty twenty-one, we are going to work together and do things differently. Together and pull in one force, together with them, the councillors. Thank you.
Tibulela kakulu onge umdu olapa engos.
I thank everybody who's present here. Thank you.
Together we can do it better. Utige umama urchin mandi icho ndirimandi. Se se kusainu eh pledge ngaba bandu ba chabaza ungena ba chakazi aba. So la pledge ke ibiteta esin do ngento ne commitment. So we hope for the best that those commitments that they did, the pledge, pledge, at least it's going to happen, we promise. But in in a way that you say that singe nela letina. We don't want to be seen as big brothers.